Call me Z and T because I'm the best in the game. I got the fame, the style that isn't lame.
Hey, is there a cassette tape anywhere?
I sure do. This cassette is the best, I can attest. Best cassette in the east to the west. Yeah, I ain't a rapper. This cassette's dapper. I'm no capper.
Okay, do you mind if I take that off your hands?
Uh, yeah, 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 sure.
All right, thank you.
No problem, bro.
And this is this week's closet classics.
Hello and welcome to this special presentation by BCAT, which will be a preview and an introduction to the special town meeting, which is going to be held on Wednesday, December the 17th, for the purpose of the town meetings considering the situation of the Immigration and Customs Enforcement headquarters to be located on, um, in, at 10 Executive Park in Burlington. With me this afternoon on this panel are Lou Rubino, town meeting member from Precinct 3, Paul Raymond, former chairman and current member of the Planning Board, Mildred Nash, town meeting member from Precinct 3, Dan DiTucci, town meeting member from Precinct 6, and Jack Kelly, town meeting member from Precinct 3. As you, many of you know, none of us is particularly shy and we have an hour to fill with very interesting and somewhat controversial conversations. So in case we get too far into our time and I don't remember at the end to thank the people who've helped to make this possible, I want to, at the beginning, recognize the facilities and the, and the people who work for BCAT, for arranging for this program, and especially to thank the volunteers who've come in to help make this production possible. We have Jack Race behind the camera, Marshall Rubino, a camera person, Mike Tredo, and Tad in the control room. So thank you to all of you for your efforts this afternoon. Just as a bit of introduction, I'm going to spend a couple of minutes just reviewing the timeline of events that have taken place leading up to this calling for a special town meeting. All of the people that you see here at the table have been meeting informally since November the 26th, or actually since, yeah, since November the 26th. That's actually probably the key point. I want to emphasize right now that the concerned citizens of Burlington, which is this, what this group is loosely known as, is a totally open-ended forum for discussing this topic and for helping people to understand what route we should take, if any, in dealing with the questions that have been brought because of the possible location of ICE in Burlington. The group has met in public forum at the Burlington Library. If anyone is interested in attending these meetings, please contact the library for meeting times and dates. But the meetings are certainly open to the public. Everyone is encouraged and welcome to attend and we certainly would welcome many, as many points of view as there are. Just to give you folks a little bit of a review of what's happened, just in a capsule form, and then I'll turn to the members of the panel to go into more detail about particular issues. As long ago as April the 15th of 2005, the General Services Administration, which is, in my understanding, the arm of the government that rents and occupies buildings or finds spaces for the government to occupy, the GSA sent out a solicitation for offers, which in our town language, we would call a request for proposal. It was basically a document that outlined what kind of space they were looking for and what uses it would be, what the uses of that space would entail. They had made efforts to locate in Charleston and Lexington and we're going to talk about that in the process of our conversation. In September, on September the 7th of 2006, the Planning Board approved minor engineering change for a fence and a generator for 10 New England Executive Park. Upon inquiry, the Planning Board was told the building use would be for office and administrative space. And Mr. Raymond will talk to that, that issue in a moment. On the September the 15th of the same year, 2006, the General Services Administration, GSA, and Murray Hills, Inc., entered into a 10-year lease agreement for the office space at 10 New England Executive Park. In May of '07, the 10th of May of this year, the Building Department received a building permit request for 10 Executive Park and on the 29th of that month, the building permit was issued. Of course, John Clancy, the building inspector, would be the person in charge of issuing the building permit. On, in October of '07, when the Red Sox were still somewhat victorious and of course, they had positive results in the end, selectmen Walter Zinkin heard rumors of the ICE facility locating, located in Burlington. I believe it was at a Red Sox game. He heard it from a man he was talking to from out of town who informed him that his wife would be relocating to this facility and selectman Zinkin was unaware that, that that was a possibility.
Which is an interesting point, if I just may interrupt you, Lucy, for a second, that a selectman in this community would not know that a facility of that nature would be coming into town.
Correct.
Sorry.
All right, my, I had, conversation with selectman Zinkin and he told me that upon returning to Burlington, he contacted the town administrator, who also was unaware of this, who called him back several hours later and confirmed that what he had heard was in fact correct. At that point, the Planning Board heard objections to the proposed ICE facility from two town meeting members. I believe Mr. DiTucci will speak to that. Once it became apparent that there would be holding rooms for the detainees. The matter was referred to the Board of Selectmen. On the 5th of November, the Board of Selectmen again heard objections from the public, from town meeting members and Planning Board members, among others, in the community. And they arranged, they agreed to arrange a session with ICE representatives. At that point Congressman Tierney's office was requested to become involved and Congressman Tierney answered numerous questions from members of the community when he had an open forum in Burlington on the 10th of November. He agreed at that time to support the community once a sense of direction was determined. On the 19th of November, the Board of Selectmen were asked by town meeting members and several residents to step in and assist in stopping the proposed ICE facility and the Board of Selectmen declined to do that by a vote of three to two. On November the 26th, a public meeting was held with ICE and the General Services Administration representatives at Marshall Simons Middle School. I would point out that there were easily in excess of 125 people at that meeting and my personal observation was that it was a broad spectrum of the population of Burlington representing many different age groups and constituencies. After three hours of comments and discussion, Town Council offered advice on procedure to the, to building inspectors' interpretation of the zoning bylaws. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support the request to schedule a special town meeting and that town meeting is scheduled for November, for December, the, December the 19th. So that's the sequence of events in a very brief capsule to get us where we are today and events leading up to the 19th of December. So at this point, I'd like to turn to, to Jack and ask you to give us a little bit of information about what is ICE? What do the letters ICE stand for and what is their task?
ICE or ICE is Immigration and Customs Enforcement, which is now more commonly known as Homeland Security. And from the explanation I get is they gather up either from different prisons and houses of correction, people who are here illegally. They get others who are here illegally at their place of work or where they live or wherever they can find them. And they hold them, process them, and eventually ship them either directly to their country of origin or to some other holding place around the country until they can arrange to ship them back to their country of origin.
Okay, let me ask you a question about that because when, when we heard from the representatives from ICE on, at the Marshall Simons meeting, in the literature that they handed out, there was the word that these people are amenable to returning to their home countries. Now, what conclusion do you reach from your description you've just given as to how amenable the, the people that they're working, that they're bringing here are to being deported? If they're coming out of jails and prisons?
Yeah, if my choice was being placed in a prison or jail here in the United States or be shipped back to my country of origin where I presumably would be free, I would want to go back to my country of origin, clearly. It's, jail is not a pleasant place.
Yeah, but I, can I interrupt for a second? Because I think there's an important point there. These are people that have completed their prison term. So their choice isn't to go to prison or go back home. The choice is you've completed your prison term and now we're going to deport you. And these are people who want to stay in the U.S., who find this, you know, much, much better than where they live. And so at one level, you're taking away from them something that's of most importance.
Well, not all people that they process are coming from a prison. They can be picked up anywhere. And simply because they are here illegally or over state visa, whatever, they are subject to being held by immigration and processed. They can be held incommunicado and for however long they want and then shipped back when they figure out what to do with them. So they're not all.
Oh, no, I didn't mean they all were, but you said that they had the, you made the comment that they had the option of being shipped out or going to prison and prefer to be shipped home. They've already, those who were in, have already done their time.
They have served for some crime committed here in the United States. They're still eligible to be held by immigration in confinement, whether or not they've ever committed a crime here in the United States.
Yeah, yes.
I'll let it go at that. Now, we know from newspaper reports and other sources of information that ICE did not locate, relocate in Boston or in Lexington and they're currently housed in the Kennedy Building in Boston. My understanding is that they're outgrowing the space. That's why they're looking to relocate here. Lou, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, first of all, I think it's important that people know that we have no problem with the administrators of the administration section of ICE coming to Burlington. We welcome, welcome them and we invite them here, you know, with open arms. What we do have a problem with is the four detention cells. Now, they'll call them holding cells and I'll talk about that later. But the fact is, they're going to bring people in handcuffs and shackle them and bring them into the facility and, and put them in rooms behind locked doors with guards. That's not a holding room, that's a cell. Originally or initially, the ICE folks wanted to move to Charlestown. And when Mayor, and it's my, the information that I have in my research is that when Mayor Manino heard that, he applied tremendous political pressure not to have them stay in Boston. And they were denied the ability to move into, I think it was a municipally-owned building. And so they decided they had to find greener pastures. I want to make one point. There are people around this town occasionally who say, "Nimby, not in my backyard." And they're outraged that we would be against their moving here. Well, to those folks, I say this. Why don't you go talk to the folks in Boston first and find out why they didn't move there? And secondly, why don't you go talk to the folks in Lexington and Bedford who fought against them moving there? ICE has had a plan to either move to Boston or Lexington and, and both communities fought them because they didn't believe that a facility of that nature that would have hardcore criminals as part of the people that would be moving, that would be detained should be in a, a, a setting such as a Charlestown, which has become a very yuppie setting, or in a Lexington, which is a suburban setting. People like this belong in a federal facility. They should go to either the Hanscom Field, they should go to the Bill Richter House of Correction, but, but they don't belong in a, in a suburban community. And hence, so anyway, the point being, Boston rejected them, Lexington rejected them, and then we became their third choice.
But if I may interrupt, Lou, you seem to be saying was what we were told at the selectmen's meeting number two. But when somebody asked that question of the ICE officials at Marshall Simons, my recollection was accurate on the Charlestown, but they said that in Lexington, there'd been a problem with the lease. And that was one of many statements where you had to use your critical thinking to say, "Wait a second, the facts aren't all in agreement here." They said that lease had somehow run amok and that was what the problem was, not that the people objected.
I think it's important to reflect on the meeting and what ICE, how ICE was prepared at the meeting. They came with a script and they came with talking points. So if you said holding, holding cells, they said holding rooms. If you asked them, "Had anyone escaped?" The director of ICE said, "Not in my 29 years have we ever had a problem." I want to be very clear that this whole immigration issue didn't get any focus until after 9/11. And that was in 2001. And then it took two or three years before they ramped up. So we only have a time period of about three or four years where there really has been any emphasis on immigration. Before that, everybody turned a blind eye to it. And, and I was very upset at ICE's presentation because I thought they were always on script, always had talking points. And we never got real dialogue with them. If you asked them why they didn't go to Boston, well, it wasn't that Mayor Manino didn't want them. Well, somebody else rented the building. Same thing with Lexington. I didn't think they were as forthright as I had hoped they would be.
And while they had very, very strict rules for how this was going to be done, the office hours and so forth, when push came to shove, where there were always those exceptions when there could be somebody coming and when they ask questions, they're not staying overnight. Where are they going to go? What if there is no space in any jail in the Commonwealth? Will they be shipped to Pennsylvania? What if they got sick? Would they be shipped to Leahy? No, we send them to Mass General. We'll keep doing that. And people would say, "This doesn't sound exactly right."
Well, they backtrack on the Mass General thing. Well, if somebody was very ill, we'd probably go to the Leahy Clinic.
One additional point I'd like to make. At the beginning, Lou, you said the objection was the holding rooms. There are a number of people who are upset at how this slipped in under the radar.
Absolutely, I, you're right.
I think a lot of us are concerned, how did that happen? I don't think there's any doubt that this slipped in under the radar. I don't think there's much doubt that they had a little help getting it under the radar. We of course have no idea of who it is that helped them, but somebody made it easy for them to get it in under the radar.
Okay, let's kind of get back on topic a little bit. Dan, you had a comment.
Yes, the, the part of the process that, that took place in Boston as well as in Lexington that did not take place in Burlington was the public review process.
That's right.
Unfortunately, rather than go through the public review process at the beginning, you know, we're doing it at the end. So in Lexington, it is my understanding that a variance was triggered. And because the variance was triggered, residents who lived within 300 feet of that particular building, which encompasses some of Bedford as well as Lexington, they were made aware of it. And it is my understanding that the government did not want to get involved in any type of illegal battle with the town, so they just picked up and left. And I assume the same thing had to take place in Boston, whether or not, I'm sure if the mayor knew, city councilmen knew and, and residents within Charlestown knew. So it's the public review process that, that I believe kept them out of their quarters in Lexington as well as Charlestown. And part of the reason why they are where they are today has a lot to do with, you know, not going through the public process, the public review process.
Okay, that, that leads us right to Paul Raymond and the Planning Board and, and what the Planning Board knew and when they knew it. And in my timeline, I already mentioned that this came before the Planning Board in October of '06, but at that point in time, a lot of, a lot of things had already happened as far as, you know, signing the lease for the building and the building permit having been issued. Paul, do you want to give us your recollection of that time and also talk to us a little bit about, well, we'll get into the particulars of the zoning bylaw in a minute when we get to the definitions of incidental.
Okay, let me just say first that I'm not here in any way representing the Planning Board. I'm here as an individual. I did happen to be chair when this came before us, but I'm here as, as a concerned citizen, as you, you all are. And let me just give you a bit of the process to give you some more understanding of how this happened. When the Planning Board approves of a project, we're very specific and the builder and the building owner have to follow that plan very carefully. We don't allow them to go off and do things on their own. So, but, but whenever you're doing a large project, there are, there are changes that have to be made. The process is imperfect and if somebody is putting a sewer line and then they run into ledge, then we don't go back and do the whole hearing process again. We allow what we call minor engineering changes. And that happens routinely with almost every project that comes before us. And the planning director comes to us with the minor engineering changes and, and usually the approval is pretty routine. And in, we, the approval came in September 7th, but this project came to us as a minor engineering change. And there were a few things like restriping the parking lot and so forth. Let me say also that the Planning Board is primarily concerned outside of the building. If something is happening inside the building, that's the building inspector. So this came before us and if you want, I can read it quickly. This was filed with the town clerk, Jane Chu, on September 12th of 2006. Motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 10 New England Executive Park for the creation of an additional building entrance, enclosure of a portion of the parking lot with a chain-linked fence, restriping of handicapped and standard parking spaces, installation of an emergency generator, placement of landscaping planters, and installation of a dumpster on a detailed red line plan entitled 10 New England Park. So that was what we approved.
Well, Paul, where's the piece about the detainee rooms?
As, as far as anything else, that was all of the information that we had. That was, that was what was presented to us and that was what we approved. And in retrospect, my feeling was that we would have been much better served if we had known that there was going to be an accessory use that would involve holding cells and that kind of thing. Because in, in our form of government, to me, it's very important that we do things in an open way and we generally do. We hold public hearings. People can come, people can express themselves and we thrash out what's best for the town of Burlington and, and for the project. But as Dan mentioned, unfortunately, as the process worked, this did not happen. And as a result, it was very late in the process and really incidental that somebody found out about what the nature of part of the building use was. So, and, and from there on, all the things that you can see have happened. I might just, I, I want to just express one other concern also. And that is, don't believe everything that you read and hear. For instance, on something that was handed out, I'm not sure what it was, but this is a chronological listing of the table of events. It says on here that the Planning Board approval was in September of 2007. That's just, that's a year off. We saw it in 2006. The building inspector never saw the plan until May of 2007. So it was a good six months later, even before he had, you know, official representation that there were going to be things in there called detention rooms and so forth. And there are other rumors. I, somebody at the meeting told me that, at the meeting that was at the Marshall Simons, when I walked in said, "Did you know that the..." I was told that the building, that the Planning Board saw a plan with barbed wire on a fence and so forth. And I told them, "I didn't." I asked two other Planning Board members who were there if they had seen any such thing and they said, "No." So there's an awful lot of information. So I would say to people that are concerned with this, be careful of what the source of your information is because you may hear a lot of things that, you know, just are not true and some of them are kind of outrageous as far as things that have been presented to them.
Paul, one of the rumors that I heard was that there was a blueprint that showed the holding cells. Is that true?
Not that the Planning Board saw, no. We did not see, and, and we didn't see anything about what was going on inside of the building. And I think there'll be a little bit, bit of discussion probably later on, on, about accessory uses and what's incidental and what's not incidental. I did say, and it's on the tape of the meeting at Marshall Simons, that as, as a result of this coming in as an incidental use, that I looked up incidental in the dictionary and essential to be sure that my understanding of them was the same as, as that which was here on the, on the zoning bylaw. And an incidental use is, is not an essential use. But the people that night said that, that the holding cells were essential. So at any rate, you asked me to present what the sequence was as far as, as the Planning Board. And that just gives you the, you know.
Can I ask a question to Paul? When you were reading the minutes of the Planning Board meeting, did the request include, have the words incidental use in the request?
No, because that's a decision of the building inspector. And so that did not occur until it was presented to the building inspector. I, I don't know what happened with the building inspector, but I assume they presented it and said, "By the way, we need holding cells and those are not specifically allowed in the, in the bylaw. Therefore, we would like to have that come in as an accessory use."
Thank you. Anything else on that, to that topic? Do you have some, something to add, Dan?
No, not on that topic.
Okay. I think that, I want to reemphasize what you said from the standpoint of rumors and what are, what is a fact and what isn't. I was reading some emails the other day and someone was blogging on the Burlington Union that this property isn't even owned by Robert Murray of Murray Hills, it's owned by the New England Executive Park, which we all know not to be true. So, you know, people were, were commenting that why were the, why were the tenants down there upset when they're all tenants of the same landlord? Which isn't the case. This is an individually-owned property by one landowner. And may I ask one thing, Paul? Who made the presentation to the Planning Board at that time in October of '06?
I, I believe it was Mark Vaughn of Reiman Bronstein who, who represented them. It's been, you know, well over a year now. So I, you know, but that, I'm quite sure it was Reiman Bronstein.
I think it's important that that document be a handout at town meeting.
A copy of the minutes.
Absolutely, that's got to be there.
Anything else on that? All right. Well, actually, that leads us into our next, our next topic, which is the difference between incidental and, and essential use, which you mentioned a little bit, Paul. Dan, you want to talk a bit about that?
Thank you, yes, right. I guess that plays into the role of the building inspector. I think for the average individual out there who's going to put an addition on his house or put a pool in his backyard or put a pool in his backyard or a shed in his backyard, the building inspector plays that particular type of a role. But in this particular case here, he's also is a zoning enforcement officer in the town of Burlington. Basically, an applicant who has a property that, in this case, he wishes to lease, he's basically going before the zoning enforcement authority in the town, who is the building inspector, John Clancy. And basically, he outlines what he would like to do or what his tenant would like to do at this particular location. And then John Clancy makes a determination of the zoning and whether or not it's permissible. The applicant, it is my understanding, followed what he was supposed to do, and that was to go to John and to just illustrate what his tenant would be doing here. And it is my understanding that he was forthwith in telling John Clancy what was going to be going on here. At that time, there was some mention of some holding rooms. Now, John Clancy has to take the use and he has to assess, he has to reference the use table. And when he referenced the use table in the zoning bylaws, he determined that this was allowed under an office-type use, because the largest percentage, 95% of it, was administrative offices. But the concern with most of us is there is how the holding cells fit into the scheme over here. And that's when John had to reference 2.82, which is a use of a structure, accessory use of a structure. So when we talk about the holding cells, and when I asked him about where the holding cells fit in here, he said that the holding cells were a use incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the building, which means that they're not really that important, and it is an accessory use. Accessory use in an office park, as illustrated in the zoning articles, are uses that are usually for the primary of convenience to the employees that are in the office park. And they list different type of uses, convenience stores, health clubs, card and gift stores, things of that nature. So in an office park, when we talk about an accessory use, we talk about something that is a very small portion of the office. It cannot stand alone on its own, because it would not be allowed to. But it is the type of thing that if there is a convenience store there, it's only for the employees there. If there's a cafeteria there, it's there primarily for the people in the office park. If that particular accessory use disappears, the office continues to operate. So as time went on, we actually found out, like Paul Raymond had mentioned, that the holding cells, the holding rooms, actually are an essential use of the operations of ICE down there. And they need to physically have these people present at the site to go through the processing. And that seems to be where most of the disappointment is within the town, town meeting members and residents, of why these people have to physically be there. So my problem is, I do not think that the interpretation of the zoning bylaw from John Clancy, I do not believe it was accurate in that the holding rooms are an essential use of the facility and not an incidental use to the facility as he deemed.
Let's expand on this a little bit, because I think this has led people to think if this could be considered an incidental use for this facility, what other possible businesses or organizations could come into town and have so-called incidental uses that would be, you know, equally alarming or disturbing? And I think that that's led a lot of us to be concerned about tightening up this bylaw. I mean, is it conceivable that that's really part of the process? Part of the objective of calling all of this into question is to get the bylaw itself to be more specific. And, I mean, people raise the concerns about, I mean, an office, a research facility could easily be zoned, or the zoning, for example, on the PDD would allow for certain kinds of biotechnical research to occur. But does that mean that it would be permissible for them in a 5% of the building to store hazardous waste or, you know, what the mind is simply boggled by?
A nuclear bomb?
What can we do? What can be done? What should have been done?
Just to answer that, when we talked earlier about the public review process, whether you call it the special permit process or the public review process, in the situation where we have a biotech company coming into town at second half, there is a special permit that was ordered. So when a special permit is ordered, that triggers the public review. When the building inspector, who has the, who makes the sole determination of whether or not this facility is within the use of the zoning, if he thought, if he thought that there were things here that may not show this to be the average office use that we have in the town today, he probably could have ordered a special permit. Although it is not, although it's not spelled out that it was required, it is not required for him to order the special permit. But if he wanted to, if he wanted to, he probably could have at least had a review process, possibly with the Board of Selectmen in a situation like that, just to go over it with them. Because he is the one who makes the decision, so if he is the one that makes the decision, and some people say we shouldn't question his decision, then perhaps at that time, if he saw something unusual here, he probably could have at least said, "Let's run this by the Board of Selectmen and make sure that..."
Isn't that what we expect from our town managers? To use good judgment, to use sound judgment, to use sound management techniques? I mean, what amazes me in this whole process is that the building inspector is being viewed by some as sacrosanct, that he can say and do whatever he wants. And I think there's got to be some sort of a balance. When he sees that something's a little different, a little out of line, he has to let somebody know. Now, he could make a judgment that I believe that it's non-essential, but at the same time, he ought to make sure that the planning board knows what's going on, that the Board of Selectmen knows what's going on, that Bob Mercy or the town administrator knows what's going on. And I think that was part of the breakdown in this whole process.
Really? And I think the other confusion for me and for a lot of people is, and perhaps explains why the building inspector did what he did, you look at the 5%, they tell you, "This is under 5%. We could have twice as many holding cells and still be under 5% of the building area." And while that lets them off the hook on the geographical part of it, we're talking about the use, which seems to be essential. We repeatedly asked the ICE people, "We have no problem with the administration part of it. That's what we thought we were getting. If you stuck to that, there shouldn't be any problem." And people said, "In this technological age, why, it seems like an expensive, as well as an unpleasant business dragging them from here to there when it could all be done elsewhere?" And we were told, "No, it couldn't. It was absolutely essential that they be here." And that's where I think the building inspector, who perhaps wasn't privy to any of that, but might be at this point saying, "Wait a second, I too was not really clear on what was going on." So in fairness to him, I think that there is an issue here that it's just lucky came up before the occupancy permit was granted and we found it established, which is always harder to deal with than before they move in.
If I may jump in here, a couple of times we've used the number 5%. People are just thinking of that as a small number, but I do not believe there's anywhere in the zoning bylaw, anything that says that that's some magic number, that above or below 5% or any percent, it simply isn't addressed. So it's a pure judgment call on the part of the building inspector, whose job it is to make those judgments, that it is an accessory use and insignificant, and, you know, that's how he got to that decision. And, you know, that's his job. But there is a process for those who want to challenge or disagree with the building inspector, and that was outlined pretty well by Town Council John Giorgio at the Marshall Simons Middle School back on November 26th.
And let's get to that. But before we do, I just want to go back and touch on a couple of things with respect to the holding cells and some of the concern or objections to transporting in and out of Burlington. Of the total, of the 120 employees, in reading the backup from ICE, which was handed out at Marshall Simons, 20 of those people will actually be assigned to doing clerical kinds of work, and the other 100, I understand, based on their factual information, will be armed. Now, it seems like the people being brought in will certainly probably not escape, because there'll be 100 armed federal agents in that building, more than, you know, 2/3 of the employees. So maybe people should feel safer as a result of this. Lou, do you have any comments about?
Yeah, I really do. For those that think you'll feel safer, let me give you an analogy. Washington DC has more armed federal employees than anywhere else in the country. I think Washington DC is number one or two, has the number one or two rating as the murder capital of the United States. So I don't think people in Washington DC are safer because there are armed federal agents walking around Capitol Hill. It's just false. It's a false premise. It's one of these things that sounds logical, but in practice it isn't, and there are example after example of that. There's no relationship to the number of armed people. And by the way, I'm anti-gun. I just need to say that. I wouldn't want anyone, any of those people, to have guns there. And I understand some have to because of the nature of the criminal that they'll be bringing in. But adding 100 people with guns just makes me feel that much more uneasy. So I would just say, if you believe that, I have a bridge in Brooklyn that's for sale.
May I just make a comment about the building inspector? I mentioned that the planning board, almost routinely at every meeting, makes judgment as far as minor engineering changes are concerned. And I don't know how often it is with the building inspector, but I'm sure that, you know, every week, there are many, many instances where there are things like these accessory uses and so forth that come before him. So he is making a lot of decisions all the time, and rarely are his decisions agreed with. I mean, if I had money in my pocket enough, I'd bet that it's probably less than 5%, maybe 2%. But when they are disagreed with, it's significant. The only ones that I can remember are the donut shop many, many years ago that Dan was involved with, and more recently, this one on Ponto Sab. But the building inspector makes these decisions, we have confidence in him, and he does it all the time. But on occasion, there's a decision he makes that people disagree with, and I think that's natural. And as a result of that, knowing that, you know, not everybody agrees with everybody all the time, and this being a democracy, there is a method and a means to challenge that decision when a significant number of people disagree with it. So I think, you know, this is what's happening in this case.
But don't you think, I think it's even more than that. Don't you think there has to be a logical flow to decision-making? I mean, I think it's more than that. I understand he makes a lot of decisions, and I understand because he's the building inspector, if someone can't do something to their house, they're upset. This has community-wide impact. This isn't Ponto Sab, this isn't a bakery. This is, this is going to have impact on the entire community. And I just think you have to take a different approach to that. And I understand, you know, that he's going to make a lot of decisions that aren't popular, but you also have to know when you have to call a timeout and say, "Wait a minute, I just, I have to let people know." The communications in this process, I think, were absent. I just think it's a little different.
Okay, but that's, you know, your judgment. But I'm just saying that there is a process when people disagree with the building inspectors, and it's not, it's not an easy process. I don't want to debate it with you.
No, you're right. No, I'm not. But I think you're right, you're hitting on the...
I think this is what's happening here.
That's the sum and substance of the issue. And if Walter Zinkin didn't go to a Red Sox game, we wouldn't be here today.
That's right.
Okay, let's move on, because we are going to run out of time. And we do want to talk about the process, which is what we're involved in doing. Jack, do you want to talk about, or which of you mentioned it now? I've lost track of what happened. Dan, would you tell us a little bit about the appeals process?
On the appeals process, the only way to reverse the decision of the building inspector is the appeal process that town meeting is going to be exercising on December 19th of this month, in which we will have to go to the zoning board of appeals with a case to basically say, "We don't agree. We do not agree with his interpretation of the zoning bylaw, 2.82, a use of a structure as accessory." In order to overturn the decision of the building inspector, you do need a vote of four to one. There are five members on that board. So individual residents, if you live in the town of Burlington and you ever needed to appeal the decision of the building inspector, you can do that as an individual. In this case, it appears that we're going to be doing it as a town. Town meeting will be going before the zoning board of appeals to overturn that decision, because we are town meeting members, but we are also residents of the town of Burlington. So in any case, we have the right to go forward and see if he'll reverse his decision.
I think it's more than a right of town meeting. The zoning bylaws are the responsibility of town meeting. And when something like this can happen with the bylaws, we need to find out if there was a misinterpretation or if, in fact, the bylaws need to be somehow tightened. And that's the kind of thing that can only take place by challenging when something is not right. And this appears to me, as a town meeting member, to be one of our responsibilities.
If somebody is not happy with the decision by the board of appeals, there is yet another step they can go. The matter can then be taken to the courts, general superior court, for a hearing there to overturn the decision of the board of appeals. And the likelihood is whoever loses wants to go that route or considers that route of going to the superior court.
Jack, has town meeting ever done this before? And if so, how did they make out?
Yes, in, I think it was 1982, when three people sitting at these tables were part of it. It was a variance granted by the board of appeals, as I recall, for the height of a building, which a dozen or so town meeting members felt was a bad decision, a bad variance. And it ended up going to superior court, and town meeting prevailed.
So while we're on the topic, Jack, why don't you go ahead now and tell us a little bit about the warrant that will be before town meeting? I know that there's been a little back and forth, whether there should be three articles or one article, and what we've ended up with, I think, is one article that's fairly broad. Would you talk about it?
We have one article, but it covers the three different points that we were looking at. It basically asks town meeting to approve an amount of money for the purpose of hiring special counsel, separate from our regular town council, and to establish a committee, a subcommittee of town meeting to move forward with special counsel to go through the process of challenging the decision of the building inspector. So with special counsel, they would go to the board of appeals for that hearing, and failing that, potentially to superior court. There is yet another process, separate and distinct from this, which was also outlined by town council. Anybody can challenge a decision of the building inspector, and I'm thinking more of the building permit, going back many months. They simply ask the building inspector to enforce the zoning bylaw as written, and of course, that's the dispute here, whether or not he interpreted properly and needs to enforce it. But in the process, they'd be saying, "We disagree with you," trying to convince the building inspector of their interpretation, but the building inspector has to give a written response within 30 days, giving more detail justifying how he came to the particular decision he did, that it was an accessory use. Because we have nothing in writing now as to how he came to that decision, and I think we would want that on record.
Jack, do you think the building inspector should be at town meeting?
If you check the rules and regulations, the town meeting has a right to request various town officials and people to be present at town meeting. And I believe he plans to be there.
It's not my understanding, that's why I asked the question.
I would hope he would be there to give his side of the story, and he certainly has one.
I mean, I welcome that.
Yeah, and hopefully, when he's there, he's treated with respect, because the man's just doing his job.
That's right.
As far as the backup that will be coming to town meeting members with the warrant, is it your understanding that everyone will be provided with copies of the planning board minutes, the documents from ICE? What do you think will be with the backup?
So far, all I'm aware of is some of the history with the timeline, such as you read earlier. I have not heard and don't know exactly what else is going to be in there. I have not heard and don't know exactly what else is going to be in there. That is taken care of by the Selectmen's Office, and today being the sixth, I think it's being put together today and possibly going out in the mail by Monday or Tuesday. A couple of things that I think should be in there, and I don't know whether or not they are, is, yes, the information from the Planning Board minutes. I would also like to see in there a notice to the various Town Meeting members, that if they're interested in being on the subcommittee of Town Meeting that's appointed to work with special counsel, they should have that opportunity of expressing their interest so they can be one of the 108 Town Meeting members who are considered being on this subcommittee. And the size of the subcommittee has not been established. That's something Town Meeting will do at the December 19th meeting.
Is it your understanding that that subcommittee would be all Town Meeting members, or would there be none other residents who could possibly be appointed?
I don't know. If a standing committee is appointed, such as Ways and Means, our rules say that a majority of the members must be Town Meeting members who are elected to Town Meeting. So it doesn't have to be for a standing. I don't know if there's any particular rules on this particular committee, because I think it defies the definitions of our bylaw.
Well, I would second what you've already mentioned, and that is, if Town Meeting members are interested in serving on this subcommittee, or that they make those intentions known to the moderator prior to the meeting. And I would also, at this point, encourage any member of the public who's interested in this topic, for or against, or just simply wanting to hear face-to-face additional information, to please plan to attend Town Meeting on December the 19th. The meeting will begin at 7:00. All Town Meetings, as are all public meetings, are open to the public. It will be up to the moderator, as he is running the meeting, to decide how much time to allow for participation outside of Town Meeting members. But I feel confident that on an issue of this matter, and since it's the only issue on the agenda, that there will be sufficient time for public dialogue. So everyone is really not only welcome, but certainly encouraged to attend and participate. And I would also suggest, when Town Meeting members do receive the copy of the warrant, and if there is additional information that they would like, such as some of the documents that we've mentioned here, if that information is not with the warrant, go to Town Hall and request it, because everything that we have is public information and is accessible to each of you as well. Millie, could you talk to us a little bit about what you're hearing in the community and the kinds of concerns that have been raised? And if anybody has contrary points of view that you've heard from people, I, you know, we would like for this to be as balanced a conversation as possible, and I confess that most of what I have been part of and privy to from the standpoint of conversations has definitely been people who are not in favor of this or the process. But let's hear what your observations are.
Well, I was quite surprised at the November 26th meeting. I didn't arrive on time. I was two minutes late, and my number, in order to speak, was in the 90s, and I was sitting beside someone with the number 126. Those two bits of information, plus a quick count, gave me over 150 people in that auditorium. And I think the very size of the turnout was indicative of how concerned the people in this town really are about this issue. The presentations I heard and the conversations I've had with people show that the issues are not with there being an administrative building there. It isn't against the ICE administration. But the concern ranged the gamut from welfare for the families of hypothetically people such as the illegal immigrants in Bedford who were scooped up, these people who we benefit from as liking low prices and so forth. Getting those kinds of people to getting the hardened criminals, which are suggested by the 100 armed people in that building for 11 immigrants coming through a day. So the concern seemed to be throughout. And I think the biggest issue was not only that this was done under the radar, but that this was not the right place for such a thing, that it would never have gotten this far had it been known earlier that you don't put in a place where hand-shackled illegal aliens, as they refer to them in the literature, are brought, which is right next door to the Burlington Mall, and just a short distance down the road from Leahy Clinic, from an assisted living facility, from a church, and from a number of neighbors who spoke about they would never have come to this town and bought property, which is within five or 10 minutes of 10 Executive Park, had they known about this. So I thought the discussion was civil. I thought the people were not entirely taken in by the answers they got. And my sense is that in contrast to the long-ago Dirty Dozen case, there was a wide consensus that this needed to be done, and that this was the only means that could be used.
Thank you. Was thinking, when we were speaking earlier, about 5% of the building, an incidental use or ancillary use, and just two things. At one of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, Bob Mercier did say in his comments, 5%, 10%, you know, and that implied to me that what you've said is absolutely right. There is nothing definitive in the bylaw about 5%. It's the use of the space, not the amount of the size, which leaves, certainly leaves room, figuratively and literally, for ICE to expand their operation, which, when questioned, "Do you expect that this, you know, you will expand at this site?", the answer was yes. You know, because of the need and because of, you know, the focus on immigration that's being placed on current administration and because of Homeland Security. They certainly anticipate, and said they anticipate, increasing the numbers of people that they will process. So the 5% could easily be 10%, and as we've already established, that really is moot. The issue is the fact that people who potentially are dangerous are being brought into this facility, and as you've outlined, Millie, it's not what we would consider to be an ideal location for that.
I think a point that people should be aware of, that there is one step left to happen before ICE can use a facility, and that would be an occupancy permit. Apparently, they have not finished all of the internal construction, so that has not been issued. I'm not sure when it would be issued. That would be issued by the building inspector, and he really wouldn't have any choice if the ICE people have done everything they're supposed to do for construction, and everything meets all the safety approvals for wiring and everything else. He'd have no choice but to issue that occupancy permit, and that is one of the things that Town Meeting would be looking to challenge and reverse, the occupancy permit.
Okay. Thank you. Two other quick points. It has been pointed out to me several times, and all of us, at the Marshall Simons meeting, that the Cambridge Courthouse is moving on a temporary basis to Sylvan Drive right over in Woburn, which is just off of Beacon Street. And my response then and now is that maybe we're not happy with that either. There'll certainly be a lot more people per diem processed through that facility than we're apt to see at 10 Executive Park. But we're Burlington residents, and we didn't have any control or say on that issue. We should have had some control or say on this issue. So I think that's part of the indignation and concern that, you know, this is our town, and many people sitting at this table, and our Board of Selectmen, and our Planning Board, and others throughout the town have worked hard over the years to make New England Executive Park and the mall and the Leahy Clinic and Burlington as a whole the class of community that it is. So we don't expect things to come in under the radar, and we'll do what we can, as professionally and politely and civilly as we can, to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Yes?
Yeah, just a point on that, Lucy, because that's been mentioned before, about police stations and courthouses. Police stations and courthouses have been part of a policing agency that we have within our community for the residents, you know, who live in the community. What ICE is going to be doing over here, remember, these aren't residents, these aren't people that are here legally, okay? So to compare this with police stations and courthouses, it's not the same. You know, they're going to be policing something that is completely different than what we're doing in our police stations and in our courthouses, so.
We're getting the sign that our 60 minutes is used and beyond. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you the 19th of December at Town Meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.